Work session of February 9th. And let's go around the table and introduce ourselves, please, beginning with Larry.
Patterson, City Manager.
James, City Commissioner.
Tony, City Commission President.
Smith, Commissioner.
Daphne West, Commissioner.
Margaret, Police Chief.
Nancy, City Recorder.
Maureen Cole, Librarian.
Scott Archer, Community Services Director.
Dan Dratlaw, Economic Development.
Tony Conco, Community Development Director.
Nancy Kraushaar, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
You just have to talk loudly out there.
Terry Mayhead is City Manager.
Doug Roberts, Phil International.
Calum Minor, Oregon.
And?
Arch Harding, Leading for the Historic Review.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll begin this evening with future agenda items. Does any Commissioner have anything to add to a future agenda? Seeing none, then we will go to the first discussion item, which I'd like to reorder at the request of Commissioner Neely, in that we have a couple of invited guests here, so if we could take the End of the Oregon Trail interpretive center request for proposal first, then that will help Lloyd Purdy, who's come here. Lloyd, I understand you're making that. Is there an opening? Any introduction to this topic?
I'll go ahead and make an introduction.
Sure.
Three of us served on a committee to select among consultants who submitted proposals to facilitate discussions regarding the use of the End of the Oregon Trail interpretive site. We've gone through a selection process. The individuals that were on the committee were Commissioner Smith, myself, and Mr. Purdy. We have made a selection among ourselves. Of course, that has to be approved by the commission itself, but Mr. Purdy's going to discuss the process and how we selected a short list of three, actually, and then proceeded to select one of the three.
Welcome.
Happy to have you. Commissioner Neely does have a memo I drafted up that he can share with everybody.
Have it.
I think there's enough copies. Okay. We've moved very quickly on this, but with, I think, the right amount of diligence. Commissioners Neely, Smith, and I started this process about two weeks ago, about where we each reviewed seventeen proposals. We came together to then review most of the -- well, to talk about those proposals. Just so you know, of the seventeen, about fifteen of those proposals were high-quality proposals from across the country, very popular. At least, a lot of consultants were very interested in this project. Of those seventeen, again, fifteen were quality and relevant. Quality and irrelevant because the consultants all had very good skills in meeting facilitation and guiding a community through a public process. So, it made a hard decision to take basically fifteen and come down with one. So, here's the process that we entered into. After reviewing the projects for a weekend, we came together and each shared our six most highly valued projects, the projects we felt were most -- the proposals we felt were the best. In that six, we found that there were three names that came up again and again and again. So, after some more deliberation, we decided to create a short list of three that we could then follow up with phone interviews. We did that last Friday night, where we contacted three different consultants with phone interviews, and we talked to them not just about their ability to facilitate a public meeting process so that the community could come to maybe a new vision for the EOTIC, but also, we talked to them about what other skills and experiences they would bring. We did this because we noticed in the proposals a range, a variation, in what they were willing to charge. I think my numbers were anywhere from twenty-eight thousand to, I think, a hundred and forty thousand, about.
Terry, is that right?
I think the most expensive -- yeah, we said, "Well, what do you get for a hundred and forty thousand? It better be -- well, I have a process. Just tell us the answer at that rate." But we know there's value in process. So, we wanted to find out what more some of these consultants would bring to the table. After that interview process, we did feel comfortable, and I think in agreement, that a consultant called AMS Planning and Research was a well-qualified consultant at a very affordable price that did more than just meeting facilitation. They could bring extra expertise and experience to Oregon City, because in our minds, public process is good and important and fundamental, but we needed to have more, more value out of the process, and we think this consultant could probably -- will do that. One disclaimer, probably the scope of service, the scope of work, needs to be reviewed and tightened up, knowing that we do want more than just a public process. So, I do ask you, as the commission, to set some direction, I would think, for staff and maybe a smaller group, maybe it's Commissioners Neely, Smith, and I, and with some staff, to come up with a more detailed scope of work, now that we've been thinking about what we want to get out of the process.
Thank you. Questions for Lloyd? Commissioner Nusida.
I actually don't have a question for Lloyd. I have a concern about the process we're undergoing right here. I appreciate the hard work that our subcommittee has done on this. I'm a little concerned that what the process we're going through right now basically comes down to really making a decision during a work session and just kind of...
No. Mr. Presentation.
Okay. Well, there's only one -- there's only one candidate in this memo, so essentially, if we move forward to this, we're just kind of agreeing on that candidate. And if my colleagues are interested, I'd just like to make a proposal that rather than just come to settle upon this one candidate, I would rather -- there's a mention of three on a short list, and if we could, you know, put this on the agenda and then with -- for all three candidates and put their respective proposals from each of these finalists up on the website so the public can take a look at this, and we can have some public comment on this during the agenda item. If anybody's interested, I don't know if anybody will even care, but that's a more inclusive process that I'd like to suggest, you know, to take the same amount of time, and it's just a question of posting these on the website. If my colleagues aren't interested, that's my preference for how to approach this.
I think the only problem with that is that we determined this process to use the services of the subcommittee who, I agree with you, have worked, obviously spent a lot of time on it, and worked very hard to come up with a recommendation for us. I don't have any reason to -- we don't have that -- we don't have that, the resume or anything before us, so...
I would make a suggestion, alternative suggestion. I don't know how much time we would give the process.
Put your questions.
Some people will have had experience with some of these consultants and not experiences with the others, and that might kind of drive what the public process would end up to be. I would suggest, though, that the resumes from these three actually be shared with the whole commission, and they have a chance to review it. And then they have specific questions about our selection process, because we have, in fact, among those three, we've selected the one that actually had the highest price associated with it. And it's well below the amount that we budgeted for the process, but it is the most expensive one. It is from out of state. And I would suggest that the five members of the commission, we've reviewed the three that we've had, and then we can come back and those of us who are on the committee and answer questions about the process then. Is that all right?
Sounds fine with me. Commissioner, Daphne.
I don't know what protocol is, but I would think that if I had been interviewing for a job and hadn't been selected to the job, and they put my resume on the web, I'm not sure that that's a kosher thing to do at this -- you know, I don't know if they signed up to do that.
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, they signed up to have a committee review it, and I, you know, who knows what their other jobs are, if it would jeopardize anything that they're presently working on in another city or...
May I ask if there's interest in pursuing Doug's proposal, too, so that we get a chance to see the three, and then at the open meeting, at our City Commission meeting next Wednesday, then we have an opportunity to really drill down on this and then determine our next steps, for instance, refining the scope or selection of the...
Will you be able to make it? A week from now?
We have two members of your committee here to back you up, so... Okay? I don't see any objections to Doug's suggestion, so let's...
I don't have an objection to Doug's. I prefer the one that I made, but it doesn't seem to have caught with the others.
Let's go with that, then, and we'll see you back then next Wednesday and look forward to talking about this further. So, thank -- any further questions?
Are you going to get these applications?
One point of just clarification. Who will you be getting the applications from?
Terry.
Okay. Good answer.
When will we be discussing them? At commission next week?
Yes, yes, because we can't make a -- this is just a work session, so it's not appropriate to make a decision here.
May I make a request, though?
Doug?
We've been delaying this process to -- Commissioner Smith and I were really tied up on the city manager evaluations, and we could not start this evaluation process in the desired time. Terry, my head has requested that the other people be notified that they are not being considered. So, if everybody's willing to go for these three, and these are the three that are going to provide it, you wouldn't enable us to move forward, because they've heard, actually, a earlier time that they were going to be informed. So, if that's okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay.
So, I can notify the other fourteen?
Yeah. That's a good professional move. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about this? Thanks, Lloyd. Appreciate it. I appreciate the service of Rocky, Lloyd, and Doug. Did you have a question?
Just as a matter of process, and again, if you want to go that direction, that's fine, but -- and I can understand asking questions in regards to the committee, how to do it, but to make a decision other than the recommendation is the rest of the commission really hasn't had the...
Been involved in interviews?
They haven't been involved in the interview. And so, with this, if you want to go through that, that's fine. I think if you go a different direction, I think in the future, you're going to need to look at a different process, and if you want to do it that way, probably the whole commission needs to interview.
To clarify, I believe that what was suggested is that we look at the three and that we talk about the process. I don't -- I'm not sure that we're discussing the three proposals, this process.
Discuss the process this evening. If it's talking about the candidates, all five of you haven't had the ability to interview this, so you can't really get on the same page.
I assume that we were just seeing them, just looking at them.
Let me defend the process that's been suggested. We've made the interviews, and we should be able to respond to questions that come forward from the other members of the commission. I don't think that's a big issue. I think also, since we actually have selected one of the three that had the highest, you know, requested amount, that there might be a benefit then to have that kind of dialogue as well.
All right. Thank you. Yes, that's...
You're comfortable. It's a little awkward.
I understand. It's not the usual straight-line process. I understand that. But sometimes, to get there, we have to go on a circuitous path. Okay.
Making sure you...
We understand the circuitous path that we're on.
Okay.
Okay, then backing up to -- we actually have another guest, so if we could take...
You have one with every issue, with the exception of three and the last one.
Are you still up? Oh, sorry. I thought that was...
You have a guest with the social gaming issue, you have a guest with the police remodel, and you have a guest with the strategic investment.
Okay. We might as well just take an order. Okay, Daphne.
So, in other words, we -- the process we started out with was a committee of three that was going to narrow it down to make a recommendation, one recommendation to us. So, basically, we've nailed the committee work.
I think it depends on how we see it. I value the committee work, but if we all need to see those three, then, you know, I'm not against that, but I'm hoping that we'll respect the work of the committee.
Hopefully, next time, we'll think this through a little more before we set out.
Yeah, because we've done this over and over again.
Yes, and we've got a million.
Change our process. Yeah, yes. So, I would recommend, especially to Jim, that when you look at processes, that upfront is way easier to design the process than it is afterwards, so... Okay, let's move in then back to the regular order of the agenda and talk about the goals and actions that we discussed at our retreat.
You don't have a guest for that one, so that one...
We could move that on, okay.
Yeah.
Let's go to the strategic investment zone, and that's Dan Dratlaw, who has a presentation along with Renata Magelberg, one of our citizens who happens to be the Clackamas County Economic -- ooh, I don't know your title.
Economic Development Manager.
Economic Development Manager. Welcome. Dan?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is just briefly go over what you have in your packet, and then Renata's going to have a PowerPoint presentation to go through a little bit of what the strategic investment zone is all about. In your packet, I've included four bits of information. The first is a summary of strategic investment zones, and Renata will get into this in some more detail, but basically, the county is spearheading this effort with all the cities in Clackamas County to put together a program for this zone. And what it is, is a tax abatement zone for large traded sector businesses. So, those are businesses that make an investment in the community, provide local jobs, but usually sell whatever it is they produce in a different location, which has the advantage of bringing dollars into the local community. There are some pretty strict requirements in terms of the investment the firm has to make, and in the case of Oregon City, we have two zones. We have a rural zone and an urban zone. In the rural zone, it's a minimum of $25 million, and in the urban zone, it's $100 million. And really, what direction we're trying to get from you today, and what Renata would like to hear, is whether this is something the commission is interested in pursuing, and if it is, then we would come back with a resolution and also proposed IGA. And the IGA is also included in your packet, and we can go through that in a little more detail after Renata goes through her PowerPoint. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Renata.
Let me add, before we do that, too, just, and Renata throws something at me if I'm stealing a thunder here. We were looking at this primarily for potential tool to use for the development of the Beaver Creek Concept Area. Now, if I understand this correctly, the city at present time has the ability, on a case-by-case basis, to create such a zone if you had potential development. What we're looking at here is actually the creation of a defined zone that is such, so it gives those the assurance that you're going to have that in place versus making that call upon a request of an individual development.
Be proactive.
So, as background, Clackamas County Commissioners directed county staff to look at business incentives, business recruitment tools that we can use to be strategic about attracting large investment, well-paying jobs to the county, and to find ways to partner with our cities if they're interested in doing so. In looking at Oregon City's opportunities, we explored a while back whether Oregon City would be eligible for the enterprise zone, and unfortunately, your demographics are too high. I double-checked it again with the latest demographic statistics, and you're still too well off to benefit from the enterprise zone, so...
Thank goodness for that.
It's a good news, bad news story. So, this is an opportunity that's available to Oregon City. As Dan and Larry mentioned, it's for major investments, and why don't we change? What I'd like to do is talk about the benefits of the zone, what some of the requirements could be of the businesses that you have opportunity to provide input on, the timeframe, should we choose to move forward, where we would need input and actions on the city's behalf to be able to move it forward, and what the next steps would be. So, here's an overview map of the proposed county zone. We're trying to pursue this countywide as much as possible with all the cities that want to partner with us. There are some cities that aren't suited. They don't have industrial land, or they don't have the infrastructure in place, or they're just not ready to take advantage of this opportunity. I've been meeting with all of the other cities, and so far, have met with all but two, and there's been pretty strong interest among all the cities in at least exploring it further. So, Oregon City is -- why don't we go to the next one? Is a little bit of an anomaly in that by statute, the distinction between an urban and a rural strategic investment zone is based on the Metro 2002 urban growth boundary. So, that divides Oregon City. So, you have the opportunity to both have an urban zone, which has the higher investment amount of $100 million, or the rural zone, which is an investment threshold of $25 million.
Yeah, and this area here is -- it was the hall annexation that was brought in as part of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, so that is actually in the rural area, which is good, because it's a lower threshold. It's, as Renata said, instead of the $100 million investment, you would have a $25 million.
So, you're not going to necessarily change it because of the urban and rural reserves process? Those boundaries don't...
No. So, everything outside of the 2002 UGB would be rural, so if...
Maybe it's advantageous, like you were saying.
I think it is. I mean, this area is now obviously in our UGB, because it's now in the city, but in 2002, it wasn't, so in a way, we got lucky.
So, most of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan is not in it?
Most of it is in the rural.
Yeah, in the rural.
Yeah.
Daphne?
So, your urban, your proposed urban strategic investment zone is the yellow with the green line, not...
Correct.
Okay, I'm looking for the white with the green. I'm, you know, pretty graphic, so, but that's how it's cut, okay.
Jim?
The title block covers part of our city here. I'm just wondering if the investment zone is contiguous with the entire city limits?
Exactly. Sorry, that's just a map. I wanted to zoom in so that you could see where the demarcation was, but it would be the entire city. And as one of the requirements of the statewide strategic investment zone program, all of the areas need to be contiguous. So, in the rural area, we're proposing everything outside of the 2002 UGB be part of it, so that gives you, the city, the flexibility as you annex and your city boundaries expand to have those new areas be automatically part of the SIZ.
Does that mean, for example, if an area is on this map, and it's outside the city limits but within that black line, for example, those, I assume, are potentially annexable areas?
So, the...
This area right here.
What area?
That one, and the one up there, and then up there as well. So, those are all currently in the proposed investment zone, or they would be, should those areas be annexed? I mean, is this -- is this -- does the investment zone boundary for urban have to be within the city limits itself, or can it be within the UGB?
It can be within that black line, whether it's in your city limits now or in your future UGB or not.
So, no Creek Canyon is not in there. I see, okay, we've lost our request to speak thing, so I'll just call on you, I guess, Doug.
You're done with your presentation, taking questions, is that right?
I like to see a conversation.
It's hard to go from the...
I mean, we're talking about this investment zone here, then, of course, we have our zones in terms of what's permitted. Now, I do read here, "Once established, can the program be terminated?" And you say, "No, once the zone is established, it does not sunset." Now, if we have an area, for example, that is currently zone industrial, and nothing has happened to it in several years, and we make that part of the strategic zone, is it stuck with its industrial designation or a non-residential designation? Because I presume if it's a strategic investment zone, describing it here, it doesn't apply to residential zones, does it?
The zone seems to be confusing. The zoning has nothing to do with it. Whether the business is traded sector is what makes it eligible for the zone, and of course, it would need to be in the proper zoning that the city would allow at that time. It needs to meet all the other requirements that any business would.
Is housing traded sector?
No.
So, residential would not...
If you can't put a business there, then it wouldn't be eligible, and you can't put a business there if the zoning doesn't allow it.
If we go this direction, it sounds like we will not be able to take the areas that we zone and convert them in the future to residential zoning.
Doesn't have anything to do with it.
It doesn't have anything to do with it, because it says it doesn't -- it cannot be terminated, no once the zone is settled.
It's not zoning.
Strategic investment zone.
It's not referring to the city zoning.
The boundary of the strategic investment zone cannot be terminated once it's established.
Well, we need, for example, let's say we're talking about, call it the urban versus the rural investment zone. The urban investment zone, this $100 million you're talking about could apply to the whole city.
It can only apply to the area that's inside the black line, which is where the Metro UGB was in 2002. That's the urban.
Okay, that's the urban, and so for the urban, but for what is the urban, the $100,000, the $100 million can apply to the whole area.
No, that's the minimum that a business would have to invest.
A single business?
Yes. Would have to invest.
I think Renata's going to walk, so I'll just let her do that.
And then, let's ask questions at the end, and maybe you'll answer them for us.
It's too excitable right now. So, to kind of give a quick overview, again, it's a 15-year property tax abatement, so it's on land, and, I'm sorry, it's on building and equipment, but not land. It's for major traded sector investment, as Dan explained. It's for companies that sell their product outside of the region, outside nationally or internationally, and bring back the revenues from that.
Money.
Exactly. Not recycling.
Recycled money.
Not grocery stores, not hospitals, not barber shops and banks, but traded sector. The minimum is $25 million for the rural, $100 million for the urban, we've talked about, and then there's a community service fee that is established by the statute that helps compensate the community for some of the impacts of that development. So, for the rural, the maximum community service fee is $500,000, and for the urban, it's $2 million. So, the county's objectives, and hopefully the city's as well, in forming the strategic investment zone is to promote Oregon City and the county as an attractive and competitive business location, to attract large capital-intensive investment, to increase business investment, local revenues, employment, and economic output, to encourage local hiring and contracting, to have a clear, established process, and that's easy for the businesses to understand. And let me talk about that a little bit. As Dan and Larry mentioned, the state does have, the strategic investment program has had in place for many years, and the strategic investment zone is a new version of that program that provides more certainty and clarity to businesses. The strategic investment program involves a public hearing with the city council and county commission, a very public process that doesn't have clear requirements of businesses established upfront. There's been a lot of feedback that major businesses find that difficult. They are on a short timeline to make a very expensive investment decision. They're weighing options across the nation, and they're also very sensitive about information that gets out to the public, and cautious about entering into that kind of process if they don't know that at the end of the line, they're going to get to a yes. So, it reduces the attractiveness of the incentive. So, going on the strategic investment zone, the next steps are to hear from you, whether you'd like to proceed to continue to explore it, and we would come back with additional information for you to get your input on what criteria of businesses you would like to see. We have a recommendation for you, and to weigh in on the community service fee distribution. Should we want to proceed, the county would hold a meeting with all the taxing districts to share some of the impacts, and I have a spreadsheet for you that I can share, and you have it.
Yeah, we have this on our desk.
And then, we'd hold a public hearing. There'd be an intergovernmental agreement, actually... There'd be an intergovernmental agreement, actually, two intergovernmental agreements. One between the city and the county about how the zone will be structured and how our relationship would be. And then the second would be a sample IGA between the city, the county, and the business that spells out everything that's expected of the business. And then finally, we'd put together an application to Business Oregon. There's no timeframe for that. It's whenever all of the cities that are wanting to move forward are ready to do so. There's been only one city in the state that has taken advantage of this program so far, and that's the city of Gresham. And they established their zone about a year and a half ago. It's a fairly new program. I know that the city of Hillsborough is looking at it as well. So why don't I talk about the spreadsheet a little bit so you get a feeling for the various revenue and taxing impacts? I know that's of strong interest. So I talked with Business Oregon, with their business recruitment team to find out what projects might be able to take advantage of this program. And there are two. I talked with Bruce Laird, who's one of their major business recruiters. Scenario one is a national lead that they're working on now. It's a specialty solar glass manufacturer, looking to invest a total of $48 million in an $8 million building and the remainder in equipment, looking to hire 35 to 40 people, paying about $20 an hour with benefits. And so, and the second is what is Sanio. And they just had a groundbreaking ceremony in Salem on that, and that's a $70 million project with 120,000 square feet of building, 200 jobs at $32,000 to $36,000 per year plus benefits. So this is a summary, and Dan has a very wide and deep spreadsheet if you want to see all the gory details. So as you look down, the first box tells you the revenues that you'll receive. I've highlighted Oregon City's four years. So assuming the business comes next year, you'd get $102,000 to the city directly. And the second, the next highest taxing districts, the school district by far, but they're being reimbursed by the income tax, so they're not as affected by property tax under the current system. Fire District and the county are the top three affected taxing districts. So you can see what those impacts are under the two scenarios. And then the next set of boxes below is the taxes you would forego by having the strategic investment program in place. And in summary, in one year, you would forego about $400,000 under the $48 million investment and almost $800,000 in the $70 million investment. So if you turn to the page in the back, this talks about additional revenue sources. So there's actually three revenue streams under this program. There's the taxes you'd receive on the first $25 million, and then you would receive the community service fee. So in the first year, it'd be $102,000 under the first scenario and almost $200,000 in the second scenario, a total of over $500,000 over a 15-year period under the smaller investment and almost $2 million in the $70 million investment. And then there's an income tax share proponent. So all of the wages that the employees are getting, the income tax that the employees are paying, the Department of Revenue is going to share that 50/50 with the community. So you have the grand total of additional proceeds that would come back to the community in the first year on the $48 million of $150,000, grand total of 1.0, almost 1.4 million. On the larger investment, it'd be $500,000 in one year or over $6 million in the 15-year timeframe. So you can see it's a pretty substantial revenue generator to the city, as well as a revenue impact to the taxing districts, including the city. So you want all of the numbers. Here you are. Why don't I stop there and see if there's questions?
What are the downsides?
The downsides are that you would forego...
Forego the taxes.
The taxes. And I can run as many scenarios as you want. If you have some other business numbers, the spreadsheet is easy to input. So if you have, if you want me to run it differently, I can.
The only downside risk that others have identified?
Well, not only is the city foregoing that tax revenue, but the other districts are too, and there may be some political repercussions of that.
Okay. Don't see anybody's...
The rap, that's why.
What? Oh, okay. Daphne?
So when you first started, Renata, you said something, this is a 15-year property tax abatement. So, and then you said something that, once you set up a strategic investment zone, it never can change. So, so the zone doesn't change, or that area doesn't change, but after 15 years, the company can go back on the tax rules in OC?
Exactly.
Or rural. Okay, and then I lost you on, on the foregoing down here. So there, on 2010, their scenario one is, is this the taxing income? I've lost, so highlighted the yellow there, what's...
So let's say the company invests $48 million. In the first year, Oregon City would receive $102,538,000, but they would not receive $94,335,000 because of the cap. Their taxes are capped at $25 million in investment, but they're investing $48 million. So that 94 is the additional taxes they would have paid if you didn't have a strategic investment program or zone in place.
So the taxing, so the value from $25 million to $48 million is being taxed, that isn't abated, or is it all abated?
Maybe I can, maybe I can offer this, this may help. First off, you look at urban renewal district. What you have there is those taxes are collected, and they go to the district and don't go to the various taxing entities. In this scenario, you would abate the taxes, and in lieu of, you would, you would negotiate this community investment fee that they pay in lieu of that. So you're foregoing the taxes, but you're getting some dollars back from this investment fee, and that is to kind of offset some of the impacts they're gonna have on those districts. So you get that, plus you help a business get...
Right, I got all that. So the $94 million here is the community, no, that's the taxes that 102 is...
Not to be received.
Not to be received. 102 is the community development fee.
The 102072 is the community service fee.
102072, 102538.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so this, let me sum up the total of revenues you would get on, under the $48 million investment. The city would receive $102,538 in taxes, okay? They would also receive a community service fee of $102,072.
On the back.
On the back. And it'd also receive $55,780 in the income tax share.
Yeah.
So that's a grand total, let's see, $157 plus 102, so $259,000.
So why is it 102072? I'm sorry, 102072, and then on the front page, it's 102538? Because I thought this was the...
The 102538 is the property taxes that the city would get. And the 102, and the numbers are so similar, which is why it's confusing you, the 102072 is the community service fee that the company would pay each year.
Okay, okay, so Larry's saying that over the $25 million, then, the taxes, okay, got it.
Taxing on the first $25 million. It's that above that that's being abated.
Got it. Thank you. There.
Okay, Jim?
Doug pushed this button first.
Yeah, oh, you had your hand up because no one was using that first. Okay, so Doug.
All right, okay. To make it easy, what, first of all, from the first sheet, we're saying taxes received on the capped, and then taxes foregone on the abatement. Will the sum of those two be the taxes we would have received? All right, am I clear about that? The benefit, I guess, to all jurisdictions is this, that you're getting a level of investment that you would not have gotten without this program, similar to the Oregon renewal. However, they're not losing all the income. That is, they, they haven't flattened out as we have in our increment. You've still got, you're still getting revenue from a development that may not have occurred at all.
Exactly.
And so that would be the perceived benefit to all the taxing districts. And what you've got to do is, is come up with a project that you can illustrate that you couldn't do unless you had this program. And the fact that you got it, you are gonna derive, you are going to derive money from it, and after 15 years, then you will get the full tax benefit.
Exactly right. And I did ask our assessor if there were any one in, what is the largest investment of any one development in the county? And she said, I don't think we have anything over $44 million now. So, I mean, these are, these are big investments that we're not seeing today.
Important to have those.
Of course, all other fees and charges they have to pay, SDCs, water, sewer rates, things of that nature.
Hey, Jim?
Could I go back to your presentation, Renata? Because it was, scroll back one or two screens. There we go. The second bullet point there. Track large capital intensives traded sector businesses. And your examples, for example, a specialty solar glass manufacturer, the other one being similar to Sanio. When you say large capital intensive businesses, is there like a minimum size that these businesses have to be?
It's based on investment. When you're talking about size, you mean like footprint?
Footprint and investment, both.
Has to be over $25 million. So they tend to be bigger buildings. Another example for the $100 million one I ran numbers for was Genentech. And they are a four-story, 300,000-square-foot manufacturing building. And their total footprint for five buildings for their whole complex is 12 acres. So it is possible to have large capital intensive businesses on a small footprint.
Yes, the question that immediately comes to my mind, then, is this would probably affect how, and maybe I can ask Tony to chime in on this, it may affect how we zone the city. Because I can't think of a ton of, you know, sites in Oregon City that would be able to accommodate facilities of that size.
The logical one would be the Beaver Creek.
Yes. However, that map covers the entire city. And I guess the reason that this came to my mind was, I can, if there, if there weren't a floor of $25 million in investment or, you know, a sized facility, I could think of, you know, a lot of places in town, we could, we could nestle little, kind of like more cottage industries, smaller-scale manufacturing, but it doesn't seem that those size or types of investment would benefit from this, this program.
That's correct. For those kinds of businesses, if they were traded sector, the enterprise zone would have been a better fit because it's not tied to investment, it's tied to job creation. And, but you don't qualify, unfortunately, so...
The other thing to keep in mind, that if you had, right now, a company that wanted this type of program that met this criteria, you could do that. You don't have to have this zone to do that. All this zone does is provide assurance to folks that you're gonna have it and it's gonna be in place, and they don't have to come to you and negotiate it.
And you have that competitive marketing advantage in the state because, right now, Gresham is the only other city in Oregon that has it. And Clackamas County would be a second, and if Hillsborough's successful, it would be the third. And believe me, these large capital intensive businesses are looking for these kinds of tools, especially in Oregon where it's so, the tax system is so reliant on property taxes.
Follow up on my point? Thank you. So as far as this specific strategic investment zone program, is the county, as far as the urban designation, only considering Oregon City or other, is the, is the urban designation being considered for other areas within Clackamas County, like the Sunrise Quarter or something like that? Or is Oregon City the only urban area being considered for the strategic zone, investment zone in Clackamas County?
We've talked with the city of Wilsonville. We're meeting with Lake Oswego next week. We haven't met with Milwaukee yet, but Plan Two, Happy Valley is very interested, and the county is especially interested for the Clackamas industrial area.
It's your original map, I think, you showed us, the first map.
I was just noticing the, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, Daphne?
Would this be something that could possibly work, since our, the Blue Heron Paper Mill is not within an urban renewal district? Could this be something that would possibly work down there if and when the time comes where they choose to redevelop?
Yeah, if they met the criteria, the investment.
Well, you would want, we would want a big investment in there. You wouldn't be...
Problem is, though, that site is in the urban designation.
It's $100 million, then.
It's $100 million.
But still...
Yeah, most of that, too, I mean, Renata, you have to answer this one, is already developed, so I don't know if that fits in. I don't know how that would work.
It's based on investment, so this could also be a redevelopment incentive, especially in a region that has a tight urban growth boundary and where there are limited available vacant sites.
Speak, Commissioner Neely.
So we're supposed to click now and not raise our hands?
Well, your colleagues are doing so.
Anyway, what I was gonna ask, actually, Mr. Grandlaw, is that we also have the industrial area that's immediately south of the college, that's not in the Beaver Creek area, that's within the urban area, but you know roughly how many acres that is?
I think it's somewhere around 90 in various parcels. I mean, there are possible other sides.
Around the college in general, there's a lot of potential.
There's a lot of area that's on campus industrial there.
Within our, the 2002 UGB, is it 25 or the 100 million?
It's the 100, on the other side.
Urban, urban is 100.
Is that area down south of Canema, within the 2002 UGB?
Yes.
South End Concept Plan. Okay, other questions for Renata or Dan?
I have more information to share.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought you were, sorry, I thought you were finished.
So I've been meeting with economic development leaders and city managers of potential partners, and we've developed some recommendations for you. The strategic investment zone allows a lot of flexibility with local jurisdictions on what they would like to require of businesses. And this is our recommendation. It's part of the enterprise zone, the companies have to sign a first-person hiring agreement that says they'll at least consider local applicants first and work with Clackamas County's employment department to help. Cite those. Also, some kind of a first-person contracting agreement that we would develop. They would look at local contractors for not just the construction, but ongoing components of the development, to partner with workforce investment council, the community college, OIT, et cetera, to meet their long-term and short-term training needs. Of course, they would have to meet all the zoning and permitting and fees associated with that. And then some kind of a clawback provision that if they leave town within 10 years, that they would need to pay back the abatement. So we'll structure something like that. And there are other things that Oregon City might like to ask of communities in city aggression. For instance, they asked, they gave some kind of incentive for green or sustainable development. It's really up to you what you'd like. We can structure the IGA to incorporate your ideas. So wanted to toss that out to you. And another way that you can use it, you can adjust the IGA at any time. So let's say you had a wealth of companies coming to you, and you really didn't want to be giving away taxes anymore. You could adjust the requirements of businesses so that it would be very difficult from the meat, to meet it, so in essence, it wouldn't be active. You can't ever eliminate the zone boundary, but you can change the requirements so that if you decide at a later time you don't want to do it anymore, you can make it so.
For instance, raising the... You mean, for instance, raising the limit to 300 million investment, or something like that?
Actually, those limits are in statute.
Oh, that's in statute?
Right.
Okay, so what kind of?
The requirements of businesses.
Oh, the business requirements, okay.
Require whatever you like.
Okay.
And then, there is a lot of room on how you would like to structure the community service fee. Our recommendation is that you use the first proceeds to offset whatever specific impacts the development might have. For instance, you might need to expand your sewer treatment plant, you might need additional water capacity, extend broadband to the site, whatever it is, you could use a community service fee to do that. Next, you could use additional revenues to support existing community priorities, or you might just put it into the civic enhancement fund, so that it's available to local groups. It's up to you how you'd like to structure that. As a reminder, though, this is a partnership between the county and the city, and also your largest taxing district. The IGA needs to include input from all three of us, so we need to agree. So, those are the two areas of where you could have a lot of input, if you'd like, or you could just take the recommendation we've developed. And that's all I have for you today, so open it up to questions and discussion.
There are additional questions or comments about what you want to do with this? Seeing none?
Do I just?
Commissioner West, or Daphne?
I'd like to see it carried over to our commission meeting to talk further about this.
I would agree. The, probably, probably a study session at first, but in any case, the, we've had that industrial properties south of the college and in the city for some time, and nothing's moved on that. And we all feel that there's a real potential. Especially the kinds of conditions you are laying out here make perfect sense in terms of working with training institutions, with the college and the high school are such institutions. And the fact that you have a hiring basis coming out of any of the graduate programs, people doing their AAs and so forth out of the college is a benefit, of course, to, to the businesses. So, I, I would really like to explore this.
I would as well. I think the process, though, is would you like to have it at another work session where we zero down on? I know Tony provided us with examples at our retreat of where our commercial and industrially zoned lands were, and we maybe want to drill down, look at those, and then look at also some specific requirements that the city might like, like green, green development or sustainable development, and maybe any others. So, schedule it for next month, or whenever the staff can put it in, yeah. Right. Any particular reason you selected April?
One of the things you may want to consider, and Renata, help me here if I'm off base, but, and I think you just mentioned it, Madam Mayor, you might want to think about the targeted industries that you want to look like, look at for these zones. And that's a conversation, too, that we need to continue with the college as well.
I think there are probably multiple partners to, to include in that kind of discussion, because this is a bigger, this is a bigger step than Oregon City has taken. Any others? Okay, well, we'll, oh, Daphne?
So, you know, I guess after you finish, Renata, one of the other, we didn't talk about a lot of, lot of other options that are available to us as far as economic development incentives or tax issues. Are there other things in the, you know, working with the county, other tools in the toolbox that we could use for those, for some of our areas? I know you're familiar with Beaver Creek area.
Dan had expressed interest in new market tax credits, and so I gave him some information about that. And I know that the Oregon Legislature is looking at a new market tax credit legislation this week, last week. So, there's some momentum there. That may be a possibility for this.
Yeah, one of the criteria for that is that the median family income has to be 80% or less. And I think the last time we checked, it was 83, so we're not, it's an issue. It's something we'll want to recheck as soon as the 2010 census comes out.
In answer to your question, there are a number of other tools that the county has that are available for economic development efforts. A good number of those don't really fit with some of the things we're doing in Oregon City. We can give you a listing of those. Besides the county, there's also a number of state tools. Again, Oregon City, because of where we're at in our demographics, is many of those we have not met the criteria for. And that's why, when we look at something like this, what we do, this is one you probably want to think about, can we enhance it? And I think that's what this program's about. You do have things, if we get into a situation that begins to develop, there are some things to state, like special public works lottery funds, that we could possibly compete for in those situations. So, there are, you know, pockets of things, but, you know, we still have, especially for developing this area, even if we create the zone, which may help. One of the big stumbling blocks is we need infrastructure out there. It would also help to have those industrial lands certified. All that's a lot of heavy lifting we still have to do before we're going to see much development out there.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate having the information. It sounds like a rich opportunity.
Thank you, Renata.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne.
Okay, let's move down then to the next item, and that would be the remodel of our, the possibility of remodeling our police facility.
Ma'am, can I propose a break now, or?
Yes, that's a good idea. Let's do a five-minute break, so please come back at 10 till.
That's a big break.
We are back in session, and we are looking at, talking about the police facility remodel. So, where's my stuff? Okay, Chief.
Evening, Madam Mayor and city commissioners. As you know, the police department is looking at a remodel of its current facility due to the relocation of City Hall to this beautiful facility, and.
You're talking about a temporary remodel?
A temporary model, yes. One of the things that we're obviously concerned about is making that facility more efficient, utilizing that extra space, not only for the police department, but for code enforcement and municipal court. And we've talked previously about the seismic standard restrictions that have somewhat limited our ability to use the rest of the facility. So, the plan I've given each of you takes that into consideration, along with also the financial considerations of the idea that we might be going out for a bond to build a new facility. So, we want to be very aware of how we're spending the public's money, and not, not planning for a long-term remodel of the police department. The remodel plans basically move municipal court from their current location to where finance used to be. It moves code enforcement to the city managers and the city recorder's old office. It utilizes the space vacated by court during their move to expand the record section. It expands the men's locker room, because right now, we don't have enough lockers for our male officers, and it creates a woman's locker room. Additionally, it moves, the police officers get more room, because they take my current office and turn that into a briefing room. The briefing room they have now becomes more of a report writing room. And then, my office moves down to, to the corner where Lieutenant Nunes is now. Additionally, we freed up more space inside by moving our detectives to trailer two. They've already done that move. And our sergeants are in the process of moving to trailer three, which would free up those offices that they currently have on the northwest corner of the building. I heard from LRS Architects today who did the remodel plans, their initial estimate prior to going out to bid for the remodel would be $215,000, which is well below the $500,000 we have budgeted for this. But you also have to take into consideration about that, we need some, probably some contingency money in there, because there will be change orders. And then also, the fee for LRS will be on top of that, which is $29,000. And then, Hill International, who's our project manager, has some fees included in that too, in addition to that too, I should say.
So, you bring us a total?
I will bring you a total prior to, to going out for bid. But if those plans meet with the commission's approval, I'd like to give the go-ahead. The, the bid documents have been submitted to Mr. Kabizman's office by LRS for final review before they go out. But if I get the commission's approval, Mr. Kabizman approves of those plans, and we send the bid documents out within a couple of weeks.
Getting approval, we will put that on the next agenda for your approval.
Right. Chief, could you explain the difference between what we have on our desk and what we have here? Is it just, we're just missing a page? Is that all?
I'm not sure. You might be.
Mine doesn't have.
I didn't have that attachment onto mine, so, let me see. I don't think you're missing a page. The three, the three below are the, are the trailers, and that's what you're talking about on the bottom of the page. But the, but the remodel plans are the same. These, all I did was print these out today before I came over to give you a larger copy of it.
One has, has less detail or something.
We've got to move up in the page.
What?
The first sheet is the renovation.
Oh, okay.
The second sheet is the renovation.
And so then, what do we have?
The proposed renovation.
Yeah, we have proposed renovation. Ours isn't labeled, so, okay. Got it. Okay, questions for the chief? Or are you all ready to go out for bid?
I am, I'm.
Doug?
There was some discussion about for the court facility to have some.
What's on here?
No, I know, I'm not. You want me to go here? I'll be happy to take the time.
Commissioner Smith, actually.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'll let you go.
No, 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 I don't, I don't want to get special treatment here.
Commissioners, maybe Rocky?
All right, so I'm like looking at this map for one specific thing, and I think I might have found it, but I'm not quite sure. Is there a shower? In the locker room? Or are we waiting until we get a new police station for that?
There is not a, there's not a shower in there.
Do you think that that's?
It was, we talked about that, it was $10,000 to put a shower in. And, and again, my concern is with public money. How much money do we want to spend on this remodel if we're going to build a new facility? And that's somewhat, the dilemma I'm faced with is, absolutely a shower would be great, it's $10,000. Is it worth $10,000 to taxpayer money to put a shower in there and tear it up two years down the road, or whatever, if we get a facility?
If you had to answer that, you would say no?
I would say no, that's why it's not in there. We've waited this long without it, and I think we wait longer. Obviously, in the, in the, in the perfect world, we would have a shower in, in both locker rooms. It's, it's very much needed, in a brand-new facility. But again.
Come by City Hall.
Right, right. Well.
Or drive home.
You know, it's, it's important to, I, I think, to send the right message to the public. And that is, when we go out and ask them to approve a bomb measure to build a new facility, that we haven't frivolously spent their money remodeling this.
For the next questioner. So, as envisioned now, and working with the architect that has done this design, is there any pieces of this that would remain in the design of the future modern facility?
We, we've actually talked about whether or not it would be better just to completely demolish this, and on the same footprint, build up again. And they believe it would be probably cheaper to start all over instead of trying to renovate this. Remember, when we talked about renovating this building, the seismic standards, which we'd have to do, and additionally, the complete remodel together would be about $4 to $5 million by itself. A brand-new facility is estimated to be about, about $10 million.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Chief, first, congratulations on the very frugal and credible plan here. I just want to ask really quickly, you had mentioned the seismic requirements, and I remember the discussions about them being a concern and an obstacle. How, how did, how did those concerns get addressed in, in all of this?
We met with Guy Spur, the city building inspector, and talked to him about our proposed remodel, to make sure that this didn't constitute having to meet those seismic standards as far as the move. And if, he said he wasn't concerned at all about the trailers, so that's where he put our detectives and our sergeants at. And then, if you look at these plans, really, the police department, there's none of the essential functions of the police department moving into the other half of the building.
Office space and record storage.
Right.
In the older part.
Right.
And then the people actually on the trailers.
Exactly.
And that, okay, that's very creative. Thank you.
There was discussion earlier on about having some space reserved where clients and their attorneys could talk without everybody listening in. Is there any place that can happen?
There will be some vacant offices available, and we haven't designated exactly what each of those offices are going to be yet. But we do have some flexibility, primarily because of our detectives moving and our sergeants moving.
I'm going to come back to Rocky's question. I mean, when actually, discussions of the police facility were coming to us from, from your predecessor, the lack of showers was a major.
Big deal.
A major issue. If, if a police officer has to shower because of an incident that he or she has had to deal with, do they have a facility they could use, be it the fire, fire station or someplace else that they can go to, to clean up?
They can use the fire stations. They use the fire stations to go to, to do that.
And that, and they, do they do that currently? I mean.
We haven't had the need to do that yet. But that would be our plan, if, if they did, were contaminated by some type of product, then they, then they could, they could go there to shower and decontaminate, yes.
Yeah, oh, sorry. I'm getting dug back. I want to, you know, you know this more than anyone, that that's not the only situation in which someone might have to go use a shower. I mean, pepper spray, or running around and chasing someone through the woods and getting all muddy. I mean, a lot of the times, those officers, if they have to change or get cleaned up, they go home and then come back. So, there's, there's a lot of other scenarios that that's getting cut up or bloody, or any, in a fight or anything. And there's, there's so many other scenarios. So, I think a lot of times, don't they normally just?
Sometimes they just keep working the way they are, and on occasion, they have gone home if they live locally and try to take a shower to clean up.
Other comments? Daphne?
You were, you were talking about that we could evade the seismic standards right now by having record storage and things within the building. But isn't there a timeline, though, like within the next 10 years, that we really do have to?
Yeah, 2022, all essential needs facilities, police, fire, and dispatch.
Oh, it's 2022, not 2012.
Okay, that's a couple of years farther. Gives us some time, actually, for planning.
Yeah, gives us some time to get.
Any further comments? Thank you. Thank you very much, and let's get going on this. Okay, next item on our work session agenda is the topic of social gaming. Who's, who's covering this?
It will be me, again.
Okay, Chief.
And, you know, to go back to the last subject, one thing I forgot to tell you is that we, during the commission retreat, we talked about polling. And to let you know that next week, I'm meeting with several representatives from different firms that do public opinion polling, and a base cost estimate right now, preliminary cost estimate is about $15,000 due to that initial polling.
Okay.
Okay, social gaming. The city received a letter from Weatherford's Grand Lodge requesting that we modify its municipal code to allow private businesses to allow social gambling, or social games such as poker and blackjack. Our current municipal code does not allow that. It allows charitable, religious, or fraternal organizations to have social games such as bingo for a $100 a year annual fee. They pay to, to be able to do that. If the city was interested in changing the municipal code, it's allowed under the ordinary by statutes 167, 121, which means that we could amend our code and allow private businesses to have social gambling. Mr. Kabizman's office did a little bit of research on other municipalities that do that, primarily Newport and Corvallis, and attached a proposed recommendation that the commission is inclined to, to want to visit that a little bit further, what that revision to the municipal code might look like.
Okay, you have before you then those documents, so is this some, I mean, I think, first of all, we have a request, but is it our desire to change our, our code to, to allow this to happen, and then to put limits on, on that? I think the questions that are in the sidebars are also. I think the questions that are in the sidebars are also good ones for us to consider. So, what questions do you have? No comments?
We've got to start that conversation, I guess.
Daphne?
Just like this, a couple of months ago, we talked about vendor cart policy and having one vendor cart equals have, you know, opening it up to many vendor carts. And so, I'm just, one of my concerns is, and I certainly respect Eric's request here, is that then it would be Wichita Pub, and then it would be all the downtown ones, and boy, this would be...
Slippery slope.
One hop in town.
There is a difference here, though, because with this, they're not, the establishment itself is not looking to take a piece of the game, whereas the ones we've seen in the past talk about that, actually, they do that for a profitable piece. And so, therefore, I think with what we've written here, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, that would limit those that may wish to operate under this.
The ordinance is written in where there is no financial benefit to the house. In one of the proposals before you, it basically, the dealer that comes in is a volunteer dealer that works strictly for tips, which are given to him by the players. I would assume that the interest in Weatherford's and other businesses would be the extra patronage that is established by people coming in and eating and drinking at their establishments.
Exactly. And then, so the money actually comes to the city?
Correct.
So, the $1,000 per table or whatever we establish comes to the city, the permits come to the city?
They would, they would pay the, the annual business license of $100, like the other organizations have to, and on top of that, they would have to pay a, if the commission wishes, a per-table fee to the city on an annual basis. Now, Newburg, or, excuse me, Newport, it's $1,250 a year per table. And of course, that's at the commission's discretion, what they'd like to set that rate at, but I think in some instances, that would prohibit some of these other businesses from doing that. And quite honestly, I think some of these other businesses, it might take away from the nature of their business to consume space by these, by these types of tables. In other words, if, say like the Wichita, which is, has, I think, a different aim in their business, a different type of clientele and business they're trying to run there, and then maybe say Weatherford's or some of these other businesses.
From your experience, yes, I see there, but I'd like to start with the general, and then we'll get to the specific, because we are not establishing, if we do this, just to allow one business, so it's, it really would apply to the entire city. So, in your experience, or anything that you've talked with your colleagues about, what are the downsides and the negatives of a community, actually, not necessarily encouraging gaming, but having a focus on, on this?
You know, to be honest, I haven't heard a whole lot of negative comments about it. It's, as Commissioner DeSida said, it can be considered a slippery slope, but I don't think you're going to get a wholesale rush from, from these establishments who are trying to do this. I think it's a certain niche market that's going to fit. And for the most part, it hasn't created too many problems which have required a police response and...
Okay, that's fair. Hi, welcome. Would you like to talk to us about your specific request?
I have not seen...
I'd like to ask you to introduce yourself, just to, for the record.
Oh, I know, Weatherford's.
Great.
I haven't seen Chief Conrad's proposal, so I'm not sure what he's...
Your letter, your, yours.
Well, what I would like to do is, is offer a safe, local place that people can go play low-limit Texas Hold'em poker, a place that, right now, people have to go all the way up to La Center, or they go to Spear Mountain Casino, or they go to one of the free games around town. But the free games around town aren't really poker. You get a lot of people who are just messing around, and it's free. There's no, no cost to get in, and there's no prize other than something that the business gives, gives them. So, I would like to provide a place that people can, can do that with real money, but low, low amounts of money. So, we're talking about, you know, $1, $2 blinds. People would be wagering, you know, maybe $50 in a night, you know, not very much. They're, they're going to spend a whole night playing with that $50. You know, they might win a little, they might lose a little. So, it's not, not really a gambling-type thing that we're, we're looking to encourage here. We're looking for, social gaming is really what we're, I like the term that the state uses.
You were, you're suggesting that you might offer this two nights a week? Is that what you're saying?
That's kind of the idea, probably Friday and Saturday nights.
Then I saw in the, in the, the code language, that some communities limited to two nights a week as well in the language. Is that...
Yes, and again, that's up to the commission. They can limit it to seven nights a week or one night a week, depending on their wishes.
Okay, thank you. Questions about this, or direction to staff on how you'd like to go with it?
Am I in the queue?
Uh, Daphne, you're first.
Well, that's interesting on the two nights per week, because I was thinking, boy, seven nights a week. So, here's, here's, I'm just playing the devil's advocate in worst-case scenario here is, gee, pool tables have become boring, maybe we should have other kinds of tables and do this more and more bars. So, I'm thinking, boy, and then, so you can make your cover, or make your money on a cover, so would there be a thing on a cover charge, an ordinance, or any kind of, some people you could play for free, some you wouldn't?
I, I think typically, how games like this work is that if it's on, on a tournament game, basically, there would be a buy-in. Everybody, for instance, would pay $20. And then the payout would be dependent on how many people bought in for the $20 in the tournament. The house gets none of that money. They do not profit from it at all. That's divided among the players. Basically, you would pay out maybe the top three players, the top four players, however the tournament's set up, and those people receive all of the money. There is no money that the house makes office at whatsoever. Again, I'm not, no cover charge.
Actually, the house is hoping that people will be very hungry and thirsty.
Hungry and thirsty is where they'll make their money.
So, presently, just casinos are doing this in the state of Oregon?
No, there's, there's several municipalities. Corvallis does it.
Well, Corvallis, I wrote down at Newport, but I didn't know.
Newport, and there's, there's several other ones, too. I know some smaller ones, Sublimity does it. So, it's, it's, while it's not common, it's, it's not uncommon either. There are some more that are doing.
May I speak?
Sure, may I respond?
I don't think that it's really likely that a lot of businesses are going to go crazy with this, because we don't make any money directly off of it. All we're doing is encouraging people to come to our establishment.
It might be more fun to play that than the, you know, poker, or, I mean, poker pool might be on the way out, and this might be the, the new hot thing, especially because nobody else around maybe has it, so...
I'm not supposed to gamble on pool, either. Personally, I'm not interested at all. Gambling is becoming an addiction with more and more people. The state lottery promotes it's gambling. And then they use some of it to cure gambling addiction. Only $50 a night. Person might be there every night, lose $50 a night, several nights. I'm just not interested.
Jim?
Couple of things. Chief, I, you had embarked on a bit of a discussion on what has gone on in, in other cities. Did, you were formerly in Mont Angel, correct? Was, was, did, did Mont Angel have anything like this?
Not with Abby there. I doubt it.
No, they didn't.
The monks all played up in the cloister. Aside from Newport, what other cities do you know of?
Corvallis, and I know Sublimity, and, and quite honestly, that Mr. Kabizman's office researched some of the other municipal codes that allowed this, but I didn't really check much further than that.
I think my, I shared Doug's sentiments on this, but I'm not opposed to, you know, having a draft of an ordinance and getting some public testimony on it, but I don't know that I'd vote for it in the end.
There's, I'm, I'm of that sentiment as well.
Obviously, to, to draft a, a document and have more staff time into it is, is labor-intensive, and it's, you know, a financial cost to the city, too. If the commission wants us to stop now, we can stop now and not go any further. It would save some staff time if that's the inclination to do it.
An estimate on, on what? On what the cost would be to bring us a draft?
Not off the top of my head, I don't. I know that Mr. Kabizman's office had, would have to redo a revision to the municipal code, so there's obviously some attorney fees that would be quite expensive, and then whatever staff time it takes to present it and research it.
We're not interested in passing it. I don't think that we should direct staff to do that. Daphne?
I'm so sorry. I'm very sensitive to, I'd love, I want nothing more than your business to be successful. We love it in your neighborhood, and we patronize as much as we can. And, but that was my first thing, too, is I am of the thing with the lottery, how we pay for schools in the state anyway, and the addictiveness of gambling. And I'm more on Doug's side. I'm sorry.
Sorry if you're on my side.
Well, I'd like to help you out, but I don't think this is the right way.
It sounds as if we don't have majority, majority support to bring this, bring this back.
Well, what would your, what would your mother say, Rocky?
My mother? I don't know.
I hear she's a good poker player.
He'll find out, he'll find out a little later.
Yeah, he will.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on, Ben. Do the next item on the agenda. Let's go back to our goals, or do urban and rural reserves? The shorter one will be the urban rural reserves, I'm sure.
Shortest first.
So...
You're sure, Tony?
Not sure at all. Tony, you have the request here for us to discuss about making a boundary adjustment into our undesignated area that, that we've, we've looked at. And I think you mentioned in the staff report that we had discussed at the retreat, but we actually did not. So, this really is the first, you've sent, you've sent us some things, but we really haven't discussed this in, in public yet. Okay, go ahead.
And so, this is just a follow-up. As you may recall, this Area 3A, which is the north, north of Oregon City city limits, the city commission made a recommendation to not forward it as an urban reserve or rural reserve. And to this point, Metro and Clackamas County has, has recommended that it remain undesignated and pack up. And there's been some requests, if Oregon City has a different view on this, considering the request from the Sears family and concerning their properties. In the commission report that I provided to you, I did give you the metro resolution identifying that not all lands are going to be designated. It is in the process that some will be urban reserves, some will be rural reserves, and some will be undesignated, but that for UGB expansions moving forward over the next 40 years, the only lands that will be considered are the urban reserve areas. The Sears did submit a request. They have approximately 80 acres. Roughly half of that is currently inside the Oregon City city limits. Half of that is just to the north of the Oregon City city limits and urban growth boundary. So, the question is, is this something we wish to reconsider? Do we wish to stand by our original recommendation? I did provide you attachment three, which highlighted the properties that are owned by the Sears family, and map four was just trying to, if, if you chose that you wanted to consider some lands. I just made up a study area. It aligns with Forsyth Road to the north for the most part, and then it does align with study area just to the east that we did recommend for urban rural reserves. The last attachment was added this afternoon, and it does reflect the two maps that I have up on the board here. I do have hard copies if someone would like this, but they are, they should be uploaded to your, to the dais. And what it shows, the map on the right is the Sears property, everything in red. And then, the map on the left, what I did was I took the, the study area that we had shown and color-coded ownership. So, everything that has a color, just trying to show family ownerships. If we are going to consider looking at this again and make another recommendation, might want to try to avoid splitting this current situation that we have right now, where a family or LLC of a family owns multiple properties, and we get some inside of an area and some outside of an area. Certainly don't have to do it that way, but just thought we'd provide that information to you.
Where I am, are you finished? I think where I am with, with this is that, actually, all over the region, people are making boundary adjustments, because like the Sears family, they discover that perhaps a property has been divided, or, as in our case, Tony and his staff went through and looked at individual properties so that we tried not to divide properties in, in our areas as well. So, that's kind of the process that the region is, is undergoing. And I, I guess, I am not at all adverse to a willing property owner that wants to have the rest of their property added, but the sec, but I think because we've been, we have spent so many hours and so many years on this process, that to, map number two, as it comes up here, the, your, your map on the left there, while possibly desirable as we look at development, I don't know whether that's the 40-year, 50-year, 75-year development map, nobody knows, but to, I think, talk about bringing that inside the urban reserves without an extensive public process, because we've already had one, does, that does, that does bother me. I, I realize that adding this, this is, adding 40 acres, right? It would be adding about 40 acres to the urban reserve?
If that's what the commission says, I would honestly recommend against that if that's all we were going to do.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, give us your recommendation, then. You didn't do that.
Well, I guess, you know, what we're looking at on this map right here, here's the current urban growth boundary. This color right here is the Sears property, and then they own these properties over here. They own one property, another property owner, then they own a chunk of property here. You've got a property owner in here. If we, you would at least need to bring this in as well. You don't have a connection through there.
Oh, their properties are not contiguous?
Well, a little bit.
Well, a little bit, on the side.
Tiny, tiny pieces, yes.
Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, I thought that that purple piece, that's not, that's a different property owner. Okay, so you, so the reasons for your recommendation that we do either the comprehensive inclusion or not is based on what factors?
Providing the street connectivity in that area, providing the amount of investment you're going to have to do to go up into that area. You're going to end up with this very kind of strange little extension from the city limits to which you can really provide no connectivity, transportation system, because you're going to be butting up against an undesignated reserve area, which we're not supposed to be considering for, well, maybe in 20 years, we would have another look at it, but theoretically for 40 years. You have, you have street stubs coming off of Ames into these properties. You have street stubs into these properties with services. It's, you have Forsyth to the, to the road to the north. You know, if we're going to go up that way, we should address that street. To just address a small portion of it is very difficult, to have county road, a small section of city property, city road, back to a county road. It does happen, but I'm just not sure what the benefit would be to the city.
So, in your best guess, and your best knowledge of that, of that area, and the resources that, that we have available, and that perhaps developers have available in that area, what would be your guess for the likely scenario in the next 40 years? Of, of, of development patterns in that, in that area? Yeah. Well, that's the same thing we have, that's the same decision we had to base it on, too. I might remind my colleagues that actually, it hasn't been passed by the... I might remind my colleagues that actually it hasn't been passed by the core four, I don't believe, because I didn't see this piece. But we recommended at impact that, because no one can think about what's going on in 40 years, that we take a 20-year, a look in 20 years so that we could make adjustment, I don't know, you know, we could make adjustments such as this in 20 years if that's where we saw a push of, of development, I guess.
Because development becomes more contentious, it's going to be more and more difficult to start to get to these areas. With voter, voter-approved annexation, you know.
Limit for us.
Which makes it difficult to bring in larger areas. The one benefit, you'd be able to do concept planning. The one drawback is that you have transportation, funding issues that you're going to be, need to address. And the only way off of here is down Forsyth or down Holcomb Road, which is going to hit 213-205, which is going to be a continuing issue. In 40 years, I wouldn't even want to guess what 213-205 is going to look like or what the fix is going to be.
Especially if we deal with greenhouse gases, right, Tony?
That's right. The benefits are that you do have urban services stubbed right to some of these properties. You have local streets with water sanitary provided. And, but, you know, realistically, providing water and sewer is usually not the issue in providing services to urban areas. And then we do have the one issue that Commissioner Neely brought up is that as the further north you go from our existing UGB city limits, the more you start to impact the drainage, the drainage basins that go to the north to the Clackamas River. So those are the outstanding issues that, that we see.
Good summary. Doug?
I assume, however, though, some of these blue lines we see here are backstreams.
Correct.
And you, you'll see several of those streams are directed north. I would guess that the one to the extreme left might be going to the Parkway Stream Drainage, but most of it, I think you really are crossing into the Clackamas River drainage.
All the drainages you see on that map go to the Clackamas River.
Daphne?
I'm sorry, all the drainages, what did you say?
Those little blue lines on, on your map that, that continue to the north, all of those are, based on the aerials, we obviously haven't gone up and done the field work up there, but there, those ravines there, we're assuming they're drainage ways and they do can, they do continue on north to the Clackamas River.
My thing, I, you know, I'm sorry, is the, on this map, 3A there, the white line, was that Holcomb Boulevard below it, below the pink there?
Right here.
No, on the next, on the map to the left there, that, is that Holcomb?
This is Holcomb, yes. This is the elementary school.
Well, I was going to say some of that, okay, I'm trying to think, is so, it's just right there next to a school, it's flat. I don't see why that can't easily be built. And I'm not saying all of that is, and, you know, to plan and leave islands is not good planning. So I'm not for that. And I'm not for adding the whole area in the red line because we have not done a public process on it. But for the pieces that are not forming islands that are, they're stubbed out to it and right next to a school and have a closed school down the block that people want open, I, I don't know the reasoning why we could, and they want it in, why, why we can't do it.
That's a discussion for the commission.
That's, that's the, that's what's.
So is the gray on that map an island? No, as, down into, yeah, that.
No, it's, it's not an island. The Sears property right here is inside of our urban growth boundary. It's not in our city limits.
Sea limit.
So it's, it's city surrounds the Sears properties and that existing county subdivision. But they are in our urban growth boundary. But they're not in our city limits yet.
Now, if they, they're asking for it to be included in urban reserves because currently it's in the undesignated.
No, these properties to the north are the ones they have, they have half in, they have approximately 36 acres in and 44 acres in the, in the salmon color that are out.
So the, the one on the left, the top left is really where their greenhouses are right now, and it's a flat piece, yeah, right below a school. I, you know, maybe you just don't put that top corner in and, I don't know.
Hard to divide up someone's, someone else's properties, though. If they're requesting for the whole thing to be in.
They're only requesting that top left piece. That right piece was in it. I'm sorry, I didn't get.
It was included in, in the lower half of the urban reserve. Doug?
Two things. One, I think when we respond to contiguous properties to the city and we see other residents of the rural, currently rural area, seeing that these are brought in, they can start asking, well, why not me? When you, you're going actually up to Forsyth Road if I read your picture. I remember the big arguments, the last time we had a urban growth boundary discussion, and we were talking about that time, going, going across, extending to Beazley Creek, and an insistence on the part of the staff, you've got to include in Risi Road because you don't want to have a county-owned road and you're not planning, and you've got urban services coming into it. So the next logical step then would, well, if we're going to do that, why don't we cross Forsyth Road, too, so that when it gets an extent, we will in fact get that road and bring it, bring it up to urban services. And I, I just, I think it's better to leave it out. We've had this discussion before. I understand there are property owners that feel they'll get better value and, and in terms of their future would prefer to have that in, in an area where perhaps if they decided to sell their property, they'd get a greater value in terms of the sale. But I don't think we should be driven by that, frankly. We've got, we've got the, we've got the area that's extending up Holcomb mode there that is included. I would argue that if we were going to actually include more land, we go further up Holcomb, that we do not cross into that other watershed. That's my opinion.
Okay. I think I'm, you know, I, I'm persuaded also by your argument, Tony, that if we're not willing to take that whole piece, which would meet our city needs better, and I think it's way too late in the process to do that.
It's about 267 acres total.
Right. And I think, I think it is, too, this time. We'll, we look in 20 years. And so I think I would then go with the staff recommendation that we don't consider any of this then at this time. Are there others who want to direct staff differently? See, no, I think that takes care of that one then. Thank you, Tony. You'll inform the property owners of our discussion. Thank you. Okay, we have one more thing to do, just a small little thing, which is, of course, one of the most important things that we do, and that is set our goals for the year. We had an extensive discussion, of course, at our retreat and where we, we didn't take actions. Some of it was discussion, but we tried to capture in this list where the discussion went. And you'll see that the document is kind of divided a little differently in, in that under the objectives, we have those things which we thought of as priorities for this calendar year, the beginning of the next fiscal year. And then we have things in the future which we didn't think we could accomplish or did not want to lose. For instance, the, starting up the National Resources Committee wasn't something we wanted to do this year, but we didn't want to lose it as a possibility, so it went down into future. So that's kind of the way that this is put together. And then you'll see that Larry has attached, of course, the cost analysis along with this. Larry, would you like to finish up that?
Let me give you a number of things. You do have, Nancy, you bringing that up? You do have kind of a draft of at least what we think talked about, and it is outlined as Mayor indicated. So, you know, again, we can chat about that and there may be some things in there that you didn't intend, or maybe we've left some things out, we need to know what those are. Luckily, a lot of things in there are more exploratory as we begin to go into the year, but we're in the process of budgeting now, so if there's something that we really want to see in the budget, we kind of need to know what that is so we can build that in. But before you go that direction, let me give you some background that I think you have to think about as you look at that. We did, you know, trying to cram everything we did into the short time is difficult to have all the discussion we need to. We did spend some time talking about division, but we didn't spend a lot of time talking about what is the mission of the city. And again, as we are set up today, what we budget for today basically are those basic things, public safety, utilities, parks, good planning. And then there's a host of softer services, and we spent a lot of time talking about those, and it's not that, those are not good, but they do have budgetary impact. If you look at all the things we talked about, we know there's significant impacts on the general fund, I'll show you those here in a second, business license fund, we're going to overextend the revenues coming in, we have some contingency that we can live off of for a few years, but that's going to dwindle down. Definitely what we talked about with the Urban Real Commission exceeds, I think, where we're at with that today. If we do those things, parking fund, community development, storm grain, all of those are going to be impacting. Just to kind of give you a quick look at the general fund, scroll down a little bit so if we can get the years and, right there, whoop, one, there, one more. There we go. If you, this is the existing budget you have today if we do none of the things we talked about. And if you look at that, you will see that we are already trending to the negative. Now, one of the reasons being, and we've talked about this before, is that the growth in expenditures continually exceed the growth in revenue. So if we're going to live within the resources we have today to look at that thing, we probably need to cut $700,000 out of this budget. And then you could probably take that on without having to do things, but that's unrealistic, too. Now luckily, this is fixable, and it's a question of just management that goes through time. But if we're going to talk about adding things and knowing what we're faced with here, and again, with a little bit better growth, that may extend out longer, we need to begin discussion of a budgetary strategy on what we do here. And the memo I gave you, I kind of outlined what some of the options are you need to look at. Now, you don't have to make that decision today, but you need to start having that conversation because those adjustments will need to start sometime before you get down where you drop below, at least I think, where you drop below 10% in terms of an ending fund balance. It also points out the reality that without developing a new budgetary strategy at this point, to talk about new programs really is, you know, it's really not a good exercise. So if we want to do these things, we need to figure out how we're going to fit those in this budget as well as those other budgets I just mentioned. Now, if you flip to the next budget we have up there, and I should have had these numbered different, I got the first one, too, and that's it. Now, if I scroll down, keep going down. And I think what you have, what I put the, going down to so we can kind of get all those things in there, right there, yeah. Well, maybe a little bit more, maybe we might get a, okay, I guess I didn't put that there. Here are the things that we talked about, and I didn't try to figure out what the revenues expenditures are and put both in. What I did is I kind of put those best I could guess, and it is just a wag at this point, and put the what I think the net costs are of these things. So if you will look, let's still, the new program cost on that line under expenditures, you'll see what those are for the year. And all that does is move us to the negative sooner unless we develop that budgetary strategy. And again, I think, you know, those may come in better, but I think this is a best-case scenario of the things we're talking about. In fact, actually, I did some different calculations with personnel services in there, material services and capital. I think personnel service is in there at 5%. Materials and services in there at 4%, capital's in there at 3%. Transfers, again, we've talked a lot about community development and those things. So again, we can address some of these. I don't think you can address all of these things because I think it does overwhelm what you're trying to do. But you do have, I think, in the next several months, you're going to have to start having a very serious conversation about what is the next budgetary strategy, how we want to manage this budget through time. You do have both in the existing budget, this one not so much if we don't do something. And I think we can get it past the pledge years, which I put at the top there for the fire annexation. But again, if we were to move quicker than this, I think that's going to be, create some problems for you, even within that five-year timeframe. So with that, that's a lot to think about as you look at, at what you've got here, but, you know, where you want to go. And again, if there's certain things that you really want us to undertake this year beyond those things that we know we're kind of dealing with, we know we've got a recommendation coming forth on Carnegie. I anticipate we'll have a recommendation sometime, probably early in the fiscal year on the EOTIC. Definitely we're going to make those adjustments to the business license fund that we've talked about. Have to make a couple of smaller personnel changes in community development. We've talked about hiring an administrative assistant over there, which is, and also upgrading that one planner position. But beyond that, you know, you're really going to tell me where you want to go this next year, so.
I think that's a, that's good guidance for our discussion as we go back now to review the goals. Make sure I get the Mac there, too.
And for everyone else, those are what's listed over there on the, the wall. You'll, you can look at those at your leisure, too. You have that on your screen, so you can see that, because I, even with glasses, I can't read that from across the room, Marshall.
Yeah, easier to see our screen. Okay. So I, I think just to kind of go, go through it so we can see where the questions or your notes are or your remembrances might be different. Some of the things that we didn't discuss, we left in because they weren't, you know, addressed. So we didn't talk about continuing to reduce the carbon footprint of our facilities, services, and activities, but I certainly hope there's, no objection to continuing that. The tree ordinance, okay? Daphne?
Weren't we talking at one time that it would be not on private property, Commissioner Neely? What did we talk about? Where's the tree ordinance heading?
We were talking about it on public property.
We, yeah, yes. We can, my recollection of the discussion was, we can have the, we can have the tree ordinance applied to developments as things are developing, but I don't think we want to tell a property owner that you cannot cut down your tree.
At this point, at least.
So at, at one stage, I mean, the development process, I think we should have a tree ordinance that works, but.
Do we need this on for this year with the lack of building happening?
Well, I think when the building starts, you want to have your ordinance in place, so I, I make the opposite argument.
So there's majority opinion to keep this on for development? Okay, I see that. Then the creation of a habitat task force is essentially scheduled, it's a developmental process for that?
You want to bring that back to a work session and then you'll decide where you wanted to go with that.
Right. The Habitat Works Task Force. Any differences on that one? Jim?
Did you finish, Tony? Go ahead, if you want to finish.
I think it's the same topic.
I wasn't talking about the Habitat.
Okay. Doug is, thank you.
Yeah. Refresh what the Habitat Task Force is.
That's the, that's yours and Jim's.
You refreshed us!
I thought it was yours.
You refreshed us!
No, that's, that's, that's correct. Our thing was somewhat specific. I was, and so, no, no, I'm, I'm all for it. We still have the Natural Resource Committee here, I think, is one of our goals still.
No. It's future.
Well, future. I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Now, Jim?
I just had a clarification question. There's a reference to a Southeast Road concept plan.
South End. South End, okay. South End Road, okay.
Mayor?
Could we revisit adopted tree ordinance? Just wanted to clarify. We do have, we have updated our municipal code to address tree preservation, tree replacement, tree tracks for subdivisions, partition, commercial development, retail development. I believe that the original intent of the tree ordinance was to regulate on private property, so I'm not sure that it's necessary.
You don't have majority emphasis to do that.
Okay, so it can probably come off.
Already done.
Yes.
Okay. Note of that?
Probably part of your code update, is that what you're doing?
No, it's already there.
There's, there's, a lot of it's been done. We're making minor tweaks to the amount of replacement trees and whatnot, but.
That's what I thought, too.
I think there was some discussion that a property owner could designate a heritage tree, and that gets protected in the same way that perhaps one of our local inventory houses has protection. And I don't know if we have that in place, but that's the only exception I might think of.
Well, we did have, I believe that staff outlined a heritage tree program at one time, too, and I, we didn't do anything.
If that's an ordinance or not, though.
Why don't you bring that back and tell us what the status is at another, at another time, and otherwise that.
So you want us to change the heritage tree?
No.
I don't know what they're doing.
Yeah. Strike, strike it for now. Okay, Jim?
To go back to South End Road now that I've got any clarifications.
We're not there. Okay, so, yeah. No Creek Canyon, is, any differences with that?
The only thing, and since there's so much metro property down there, and it's an area that's designated as a area where we would have, want to have a regional trail, although that regional trail now, I'm not sure. although that regional trail now, I'm not sure, that regional trail extends all the way to Beaver, Beaver Lake, and that area is on rural reserve, so I don't know what our problems are in terms of putting a trail on a rural reserve, but in any case, in terms of New Oak Creek Canyon, I was going to suggest that the IGA somehow involve metro in terms of how it's dealing with its, the majority of the land that actually owns in New Oak Creek Canyon, so I was going to put, with Clackamas County slash metro.
The IGA will likely only be with Clackamas County, but we have the presentation by metro, so we'll be able to address that, since we have that as number two. So, then, you know, I think we can, whatever flows from that, I think will be easy to follow. Okay, so then, in the future, we have the Natural Resources Committee, Tree City USA, if we wish to go there, conservation easements and tiered water rates. Number two is economic development, and so we talked about the efforts in the downtown, and so that's the Main Street program, the downtown parking plan, downtown traffic circulation plan, the arch bridge mitigation, and then efforts on the Blue Heron property. Any additions or corrections to that? Okay, and then regional transportation efforts that we...
Just one second, going faster than I am.
Sorry?
That's all right.
Downtown.
Okay, go ahead. We're not going to goal three yet, though.
No, we're on goal two, and we're talking about regional, regional transportation, and under that, we have the elevator, light rail, and high-speed rail.
Near north.
Yes, Daphne.
In light of the strategic investment zone, is that what we talked about tonight? So I don't know if we're, it might be too early to put these in in any of our goals, but I just...
Actually, that's a good one.
That is a good one.
Yep, let's, maybe...
That could go to downtown, I didn't, because I can't read the whole screen at once.
I think it goes to the end, because the first, the first piece, number one is downtown, and it's not that, number two is transportation, number three is job creation in urban renewal, so it needs to be goal number, is everyone supportive of that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, goal number three.
It could be a form of explore, yeah.
Explore the feasibility of a strategic investment zone. Okay, got that. All right, now, back to transportation, any issues there?
Okay.
And now we're into urban renewal. So, under urban renewal, we talked about the code development, the rivers development, and then we have an option package for funding that we wanted to explore with the Urban Renewal Commission, and that was a BID, loan programs, funding tools for big, expensive developments, facade improvement grant increases, and then guidelines for small grant administration. Anything to add to that?
Yes, I actually have a suggestion.
Okay, Jim?
On urban renewal, we have, we have discussed developing a critical mass of residential development downtown. I'm not sure I see that reflected.
Oh, I think we must have missed that.
Yeah, there's a issue on urban small.
Yeah, market feasibility, yeah. I was thinking we had to have that there. Okay, so then, another idea was to explore alternatives for energy and conservation, and that specifically, the gas-fired energy plant we talked about, and the Plasmark.
If I could refine that, I think we also discussed creating an energy authority similar to Eugene Rekizer, a city energy authority.
I think that has to do with the gas-fired energy plant.
Too soon in the process.
Is that's all around that?
That may or may not happen after we review the other things, don't you think?
I think that would evolve out of...
It would, may or may not.
Right, chicken egg.
It's chicken egg.
Yeah. Okay, and then the next street would be, the next one would be on Main Street, it's spaces, what we want to do with spaces, like performance space, farmers market, and business Then, we haven't finished the storefront guidelines, and we knew we needed to merge those with, the Main Street work with urban renewal work, and then we also discussed developing a program about pre-qualifying architects. We already talked about housing. Any changes or comments on this one? Daphne?
Just a comment on, and it's a little farther up, and I, where is it here? Okay, well, it was, when we talk about light rail, that we can, it would be nice if we could define, if we were defining where we, where we want light rail to, the terminus to be in Oregon City. So, continue regional involvement, but I just hope that that's part of the conversation here.
Oh, yeah. It hasn't been determined where it'll go, so that is part of the discussion, I don't think it needs...
Because it was on Main Street, sorry.
No, I don't think it needs to be an argument, too.
I'm going to make a comment, I heard, I heard Metro, President Breagan, being interviewed on a station, where he was talking about the next light rail going down to Towahlet, and now that may in fact be where the priorities are at this point, but...
It is.
We, I, I don't know where you enter this kind of thing in the, in the priority process, and I realize that many people want light rail to come out to them, but I think we have to have an activist policy in terms of moving things, so...
We, Nancy and I both stayed on those committees and are very actively working to make sure it comes to Oregon City, and one of the problems is that it hasn't yet come to Milwaukee, and so that's sort of one of the tie-ups, but Nancy, did you have a...
And there was an extensive study done by Metro with participation from representatives from all the agencies in the region, that was, showed that in terms of demand for light rail, and therefore ridership and ability to receive federal funding for light rail, that the southwest Barbara Boulevard area slash I V corridor really scores much higher than our corridor would at this time, but we are in the next tier, so we're not forgotten, and we, Tramit's very much aware of the need to bring, because we're a regional center, and that's one of the goals for light rail, is to connect all the regional centers.
We do not get forgotten in the, in the conversation anymore, and that wasn't always the case, but the whole region has really converged behind the Barbara Boulevard alignment.
Southwest corridor, we're calling it that.
Southwest corridor, oh, thank you. Okay, and then in the future, below the line, we talked about the Beaver Creek Concept...
Can I get before, before the future there?
Before the future, in the present.
I've got a possible H to consider.
Sir. Urban renewal, that's in urban renewal.
Yeah, that's in urban renewal. Discuss with Clackamas County, the future use of the land along Abernathy Creek, I don't think that's specifically highlighted here, but it's something that we've talked about.
Big Blue?
Big Blue, the land, yeah, along Abernathy Creek, it's more of a Big Blue.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Wouldn't have to be to put it down.
Well, let's put that, I think that probably belongs...
You might go higher, that is, you might want to put it at a higher letter, probably something after B, for example, would probably make sense, because it's side of the rivers.
Yeah, it's in those discussions.
But I would suggest that point be put in at something, but...
There, did you capture that?
Three B, two.
Right. Okay, then, so for the future, we held, actually, certified employment lands, I was hoping we could do this year. Is that not possible to do this year, Tony?
I think we need to do more work on the infrastructure financing.
Or we do that, okay. So, holding it over to next year, then, or wherever. Implement the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, and that was another, we discussed that at the retreat, and I think that was, needed a little more work on that as well, and then...
Do we do that without it...
Well, we already have some of it in, that's annexed, but again, part of the problem is how do we annex, how do we create the climate, and which an annexation can occur?
Start putting these tools together, and again, even with these, I think, you know, it's not something that we will, for instance, undertake this year, but if an opportunity arose, you could see it jump, depending on what may happen or something.
Again, we don't want to forget that, because it's certainly part of the work agenda for the community for the future, and then exploring redevelopment of a shopping center site, that will kind of be ongoing work, too. Any comments or questions about that, or forgotten things? Okay, goal number three, this is the year of the facility, so we have, number one, find a site for the library and determine the funding. Number two, it's the police facility, and Chief mentioned polling this evening, and we did review the final design, but it's going to go out for bid, so it probably needs a little bit rewarding there, but those are, those are probably the things that are going to happen this year, whereas the long-term facility, so we'll have to plan. We've got the swimming pool upgrade still on the horizon, the Carnegie Center Task Force will be coming to us, as will the Public Works Center, and then select the consultant, that may happen pretty soon. And then, we have a couple of tools that we wanted to talk about, or actually, yeah, exploring the use of SDCs down at the Interpretive Center site, and we also needed to explore the charter park status, I think, before we hired a consultant, see what the limitations were on that. And then, continuing to work with the National Park Service on transferring Ermiting or House for long-term preservation. Anything else? Okay, and then in the future, looking at heritage tax with Clackamas County and other partners.
I'm just, I'm just nitpicking on that one. First of all, when we talk about a heritage task, we haven't had any public process within our own community, so first of all, I would, before we're going to make any resolution asking Clackamas County that...
Explore.
We're going to explore what, if our own community thinks it's a good idea, because there's, I don't know how many cities in Clackamas County.
I would, I would concur with that wording.
So it's just nitpicking wording.
Yeah, I would concur with the wording of explore.
And that's a future issue, it's beyond...
It's beyond.
But to put explore as a good word. Rocky?
On number seven, under goal three...
Ermiting or House?
Ermiting or House.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, we all agree on that, but I'm wondering if it doesn't make any effort or any goal that we're going to make sure that we're maintaining the house, or taking care of the house in any way until that happens, and so I'm kind of concerned by not having something in there that says that we're, we're trying to be proactive at making sure that the house doesn't degrade any further, or something like that, in that time.
I could address Scott Archer, it's my understanding that National Park Service maintenance staff have gone through that, and that, is it a fair assumption that they would be on top of any maintenance needs, that we might have to either do, complete, or partner with them to complete, or...
Well, we're not quite there with them yet, but we're getting to that point, what you're talking about, Mayor Norris, and I think the key there is, as we're going through the conversation with the NPS, is that we don't want to, they have certain standards and things that they would do if we were to invest a large amount of money, and then they might do it differently, we don't want to, we don't want to waste those resources, but to Commissioner Smith's point, you know, of course, the commission, you can put that in your goals if you want, but we, as staff, are looking at that and making sure, we're trying, right now, what we're trying to do is balance the going forward with the discussion with NPS, and, and still, we still own and operate and manage the house, so we're trying to be aware, and we are looking at, you know, if something, if a major issue came up, I think what we would probably need to do is come back and talk to the commission, anything beyond just regular, basic maintenance, so we're already tuned into that, but...
Do you have some wording that you might like to use?
I've got a suggestion on the version wording.
Sure.
We got there, continue the process of transferring Ermiting or House to the National Park Service, and coordinate maintenance with the service in the interim.
Maybe A, put an A.
That's fine.
Yeah, coordinate maintenance...
With the National Park Service in the interim.
In the interim, okay?
Scott, can I ask one question? The Ermiting or House was on the agenda for Historic Review Board tonight, do you have any idea what that discussion was, or...
It was just an update.
Okay, an update on...
I didn't have a conversation, but just in some email back and forth with Christina Robertson Gardner, she would, I guess they just had it as a tickler on their agenda to ask staff to come back as an update from the joint meeting that you had with them, and so I, I just gave her a real brief update on where we're at, you know, the discussions that have taken place, and then, kind of like what I just explained to you about the maintenance and where we're, where we're at with looking at the needs of the house, that's, I believe, is what, all that that was.
Okay, then goal four, livability, number one is the waste, our involvement in wastewater, and number two are a couple of code, three, actually, code changes that we're, four, code changes that we're considering, charter and/or code, and that's the reduction of the planning commission to its current operating size of five, the city attorney working for the city commission, and the ombudsman and full-time CIC staff, and then fourth, the water rollback charter provision, which I'm not positive is on this year's work agenda. That one, I would put back to the future. Any objections to that?
Which one?
The water rollback. I think we have, getting a new city manager, I think, up to speed, and is, I would put that back to another year. Roll that off. Don't smile.
The other question I raise, if you're going to revise the charter, do you want to do that, put that back and go through another charter revision, or do you want to do that all at one time?
I, you didn't ask, but my view on that is that, we already, well, before I was seated as mayor, there was a task force that actually did a, one of the things that the charter needs is a total cleanup and rewrite, and it still talks about the mayor he and some very antiquated language, so it would be my view and the practice of other cities that you do the cleanup and the non-controversial things, and then you add the controversial things as individual charter changes.
Yeah, you don't torpedo, you're cleaning up.
Right. So, it seems to me that might be step one and step, step two that happen here, so perhaps on this list, as we discuss that, is cleanup of the antiquated charter, but I'm not sure that that's in this year's work agenda either, because we've got a lot on the table, and it's been bumped, it's been bumped for eight years, actually, because we've had so much work on the table. Daphne?
And my, my contribution to this whole process would be that we can't forget the public, and we need a, some public process on what...
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if we have time with the new city manager either this year, but...
Is there objection to putting the water rollback off another, to another goal sitting session?
I think we should, because, actually, we talked about that water rollback, I think we still need information on, on, on the actual revenue stream, if we did the 3% for the whole period of time, we, I, I know we discussed it, but we don't, we haven't, we really haven't seen a breakout of the separation of the bonds that we're currently paying...
Right, I remember.
And the 3% piece, and I haven't seen at least to my satisfaction.
I remember that. Okay, well, let's move that down into the future.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm confused again, so are we doing the cleanup language this year on some other, you know, on the...
There's, I've heard no, no concurrence on that, but I've heard concurrence that we move the water rollback down.
Okay, so cleanup language, are we going to do this a two-step process, that we're going to do the, what's the word, not technical, but the...
Here's what I would recommend to you, because having been to a couple of different charter revisions in the past, and again...
Not here, I might add.
It can get to be, not here, it can get to be an interesting discussion. I think if you won't, if it is required, and that's something that the city attorney's going to have to indicate to you, but I think he's kind of leaning in that direction in regards to those two appointments, you might want to just deal with those two issues. When you get in the charter cleanup, I think what you're really going to look at, need to look at, is opposed to going through and that type of discussion of cleaning this up and cleaning that up, you probably want to go and start looking at a model charter.
That's actually already been done.
Yeah, because you can pull those off, and really basically give you a working framework, and all this other stuff gets moved over at ordinances, and so you could do all that, which would also involve your water rollback and all those controversial issues at later date, and I think what you're really wanting this year is kind of look about these two positions, if it requires a charter change, so...
The cleanup could actually happen, maybe you're...
And then when you clean it up, and if you go to a model ordinance, you'll probably want to make sure those two sections are in there, so you can begin to muddle it up again.
Well, we have that, we have two, I know we have at least two charter rewrites, one that the attorney did, and then one that Commissioner Bailey put together.
You can also get those out of league.
Yeah, well, he got, that's where Bob Bailey got his. So, we have those tools, they just are sitting, waiting for the right time.
Don't run away from 2C.
Okay.
Allow the city commissioner to hire an ombudsman that reports to the city commission... Allow the city commissioner to hire an ombudsman that reports to the city commission, and will become full-time staff to CIC, and serve as a liaison to the neighborhood associations and business community.
I think we can define that.
Well, it's not there, though. It mentions the CIC, and that, I mean, the CIC is only a piece of it.
Oh, I know, but I think as we, okay.
Yeah, it's not that hard to add in just a few words.
No, it isn't, but I'm not sure we have full agreement on that that's, that we wanted to find it in our goal.
We're going to establish whether we've got full agreement, come on!
Not that much right now. I mean, there might be somebody else that needs to have an ombudsman to straighten out what they think is fair with a settlement.
This is just a suggestion. This will get a full-
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I think it's too, it's too early to tighten some of that up. I mean, we haven't considered every kind of situation that an ombudsman-
Right now, it says only a full-time staff to CIC, that's not satisfactory.
Why don't we add that and just keep it to City Commission?
Sure. Why don't?
The only question I would ask, yeah, you can make it CIC and neighborhood associations, can that person serve those two and also be a liaison to the business community?
Why don't we just put the period after City Commission, and then, that will allow us to define it as we discuss and develop it?
That's fine.
Is that good? Okay. All right, now, continue city upgrades, those are the CIP, TSP, we know those are big projects for the year. And then, staffing. We're looking at the financial feasibility of continuing the Economic Development Manager with the Business License Fund, and we're looking at community development, the things that Larry has on the-
And your Business License Fund brings in roughly new revenues of $35,000, and we have committed, if we do this, we'll have $35,000 going to economic development and $50,000 going to Main Street, so. Which, you still have the contingency which will allow you to do that for the next couple of years, but you are over-expending what you're bringing in, but not over-expending the fund at the present time. So, again, something you'll have to think of, a budgetary strategy as you move through time on that.
And then, as you'll note, we've actually prioritized these, so check this out, because under number four, we have, we talk about two positions, and we've put off to the future some others, but before I get into there, let's jump over the National Heritage Area efforts. I think everyone was favorable to that, but we don't know the funding source. Rocky?
I think, well, I think I was the only one that was kind of talking specifically about whether or not I agree with it or not. I think my, my decision on whether or not I support it has to do with where the funds come from, so I think this reads, we've already committed to money, we just need to find it where.
You want to, I thought that's where, went to explore?
I, that's for me, but I may be the only one that's-
Well, then you can approve it.
I kind of like to, well, that's true, so.
That's a $5,000 expenditure, right?
Well, it's 10, but we have $5,000 left over from the expenditure on the, for the architectural students' projects, so it's really just $5,000.
Does that stay in there?
Yeah, staying in there, but it's explore staffing, after first determining-
No, explore, funding for staffing.
Funding for, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, future, then, this is the other staffing pieces, that in planning, that we wanted to consider a planner with a background in urban design, but that was able to multitask.
I'm not sure why that's in future, I thought that was something we had decided to explore in the current year.
Which one?
Urban designer.
Oh, we don't have, well, where are we going to get the funding for it?
Well, I-
I don't think we-
That's part of the budget process, I think. I mean, if we're going to consider it, I don't think it has to be in the future. I think we have an upcoming budget cycle, I'd like to explore it within that budget cycle.
After Mr. Patterson's presentation tonight, I don't think that, for me, it's going to be too far out there. I mean, it might be something down the road we can do, but I don't think for this year we can do it.
Okay, what I would suggest, then, if that's where we want to go, is that under four, B1, where we're moving an entry planner into planning, into planner position, that I think Tony talked about the fact that that is, is something you like in the department, that either we consider training, or, training for the planners, or that we consider urban design. So, we move that to that.
My understanding that that B1 was specifically directed towards upgrading Laura from entry to permanent.
Correct.
And I-
Well, the problem is, we don't have, we're not hiring another planner, so that's-
Well, I think, my recollection of the retreat was that I discussed the fact that, since we're moving Dan from Community Development Director to Economic Development Manager, that left our planning department staff from a staff of five down to a staff of four. There was a discussion of an office assistant to bulk up and serve both planning and the building department, and that's where I introduced a more ambitious project of, instead of doing just an office assistant, considering going back to a staff of five, maybe, and again, like it says here, with multitask responsibilities, as a more ambitious version of the original idea, which was an office assistant. That, so I guess, what I was talking about, is it directed towards B1, which, because I'm fully supportive of moving Laura from entry to staff, it was determining in the budget cycle whether B2 could be more ambitious than what it is now, so that's what I would like to explore during the budget process.
Here's, if, here's what I would recommend to you, and you can figure out where you wish to go with that, is, we definitely, with moving of Dan's position, is that has reduced the staffing that you have in economic development, or in, community and planning. Talking to Tony, what he indicates, the thing he needs most right now is this office assistant position, so that takes you back to the number you have, even though that gives you a slight savings or what's what, because we're moving Dan's salary being paid from urban renewal and business license. As you look at the budget, one of the costs that continue to grow way beyond what we had planned is community development, and with development being down, is that is a red operation and the red continues to grow more. As you, and so, if I was presenting you the budget, I couldn't recommend that unless the need was such that it demand that. As you look at your budget, and you look at that, and look at these long-range, if you want to then start talking about other types of funding, when you have, you can have those conversations. It's a question, again, I think you need to consider when you look at those projections, because you can do any of this stuff and add back, but you need to have a budget strategy. Because the one we've had and been working on, it's worked up to this point, now we need to start talking about the next phase of that budget strategy, and without that, to talk about any of this stuff, really is, is really a kind of an exercise that takes you, sooner or later, that, that cost is going to, I mean, those chickens are going to come home roost, and so you got to deal with it and begin to chat about it. Now, you may not have to implement it right away, and so that's one of the things, as you look at the budget, you might want to add some things in there, but you, in doing that, you need to have a strategy of how you're going to bring those costs in and account for them as you go through that.
If I could just, to direct the discussion, to go through the staffing needs here, then, I think we can talk about the priorities, because we have parks maintenance, I think we're looking at hiring two over five years, is that correct? For parks maintenance?
Yeah, that was the, well, we added one last year.
Okay, we need to, we know that we have to, want to backfill the cops-funded officers so that we don't have to make cuts when that, those grants expire in five years. We talked about another recreation heritage person, I'm not sure about that. And then, under administration, a volunteer coordinator, and then, I talked about assistance that's needed in the finance department, three positions there, and then, land use isn't really staffing, but anyway, those are some of the needs that we discussed.
I'd like to make a suggestion, I think I've, maybe this would help the discussion, because I appreciate Larry's comments about the budget strategy, and I agree that, given what that we're facing, we've got to, you know, we've got to start strategizing about it. I'm wondering if we could take all of this future, number one, in staffing, and move the whole block into the main section in, within the context of that budget strategy.
Prioritizing staffing-
Staffing, yeah, yeah, in the context of the budgeting strategy.
I like that, because I think that's the more broad discussion, and then, so that will incorporate also number, that's really essentially where number four probably belongs.
Does the ombudsman belong there?
Yes. That's probably, that's probably a good place for the discussion to be, to begin, because it's a budgetary item as well. Okay, good, I like that, that puts it in a better bundle. Okay, and then, land use, we know we haven't done the South End Concept Plan, and we're implemented the Park Place Concept Plan.
We got a question, since we finally arrived at the South End Road Concept.
The SE.
Is that, is that actually legally mandated, Tony, as far as-
The Concept Plan, yes, it is.
For South End?
Yes.
Are we facing, is there a deadline we've passed, are we facing any-
We request extension through Metro.
We have some funding set aside for that. $150,000? No, less.
It's 200.
$200,000, okay.
It's money that Metro gives us.
For the construction, for the construction excise tax, yeah.
Again, as you see up there, is, Tony's indicating that, you know, the cost that exceeds what we're getting, so again, that is an additional cost you have to figure out.
With the other two, yeah. Okay, number five, increased communications with citizens, and this is the part that we didn't discuss. So, some of these are under the City Recorder's Office, so number one was continue to upgrade city records management, and under that, records management strategic plan, historic preservation, develop the Granicus voting system package, which we don't do completely, improve email storage, and then, of course, the upcoming elections. Any questions about that, since we did not discuss that?
Could this whole package have a price tag, or each item have a price tag? Or a prioritization in it, if it, if they do all have price tags? I don't know if they do.
Something I can, I can use my current budget for.
Okay.
The Granicus voting system, if you wanted to use, use the full system, it would be about another $10,000. The other efforts here is more informational, you know, what the plan is for the historic preservation of city records this next year. That was, that was in the packet, I can give that to you again later. Creating a new email storage system, Outlook is not really built to store our email, but there's a lot of really good software out there, so that would be a purchase. And it's not, it's not a lot, we're not talking about a lot of money here.
No, but the email storage, I mean, those are, those are crucial record like anything else, and the way they're stored right now, we're keeping them, finding an email sometimes can be a big task.
Have the same trouble. Yes, don't we all? Any more questions about the City Recorder's Office, since we didn't, as I said, discuss that at the retreat?
I'm certainly grateful for all the strides you've helped us make in a more transparent government, so it's been great. It's been a really interesting thing to, interesting process to learn all this, I've really enjoyed it.
Maybe a 500% improvement, actually, over where you started, so that's a-
It's been a long haul.
We've come a long way.
Yeah, we have. The historic preservation of city records, I'm very excited about this, this year, because I'm contracting with a, well, actually, we're getting a free service from the state, he's coming down and will evaluate all of our historic records that we have, that we don't really know what to do with at this point. There's so many things, because we're so old and we want to keep them appropriately, and he's going to give us his professional advice and help us with that, so that's going to take place in this next year.
Good, keep us updated. Great. And then, the last three things, continue to improve neighborhood associations in CIC, continue to develop the new IGA with Lamont Falls Cable, with West Lynn, and then, thirdly, our annual volunteer recognition event. Any additions or changes? All right, goal number six, fiscal health, which is so key. Our three, our four objectives here, maintain the fire annexation commitment, update the Comcast franchise, oh, WFTV contract, probably, we don't need twice.
They can come out of there.
They can come out of one. And then, implement the annual CIP. And then, for the future, we have what Jim was talking about, the, look at the stormwater standards that are, would be, would be new and beyond what the state requires at this current time. And that's it, so does anyone have other things that need to be added, or can we ask staff to prepare this for adoption at our next meeting?
Madam Mayor, if I could just, real quick, on the goal one concerning the adoption of the tree ordinance, in July 1st of 2009, we did adopt a new section in municipal code that dealt with heritage trees.
It's in there, oh.
That may have been-
We don't even know what we do.
We forgot, I guess. I guess we forgot.
What did you say?
I'm sorry?
I guess, I guess, that's why I remembered, I knew we had, had the words someplace.
That may be off the list, or-
Would you maybe send us that email, so that we can refresh our memories on that one?
Yes.
Or tell us where to find it in the code.
It's my fault, I brought it up.
Yeah, it's yours, Doug.
That memory thing, um-
Tony, thank you for the gotcha, I like that. Okay.
One comment?
So, staff, you have more comments? Okay.
No, I was just going to say, Larry, if you put this list together, thank you so much that you can make, it was really very organized and encapsulated all of our thoughts, I mean, we didn't have too many changes.
Didn't look like that at first.
It didn't feel like that, but it's so, I'm impressed. It's a good job. Good job.
Okay, so, we'll see that. We'll see that at the next meeting, or whenever we get ready. All right, and that is it, isn't it? Okay, city managers' report.
I have nothing.
Actually, I do have a question, and Nancy Crosshour may feel free to say you're not ready, but we have not had an update on the Arch Bridge, and I believe you've had some communication. Do you mind sharing that this evening? Thank you.
I had a conversation with a ODOT staff person the other day, and they have selected April for bid date, so they're, they're moving a little faster than we had anticipated, and then, a bid award would probably be in June-ish, if everything goes as per the rules. Then, the part of this contract would be for the contractor to actually do more exploration within the bridge, shall, the, with, inside the gunite, of course, is the steel structure, and before they remove all the gunite, they'd really like to have a better idea of what they're up against with the steel structure. Many of the engineers that are working on the project feel like the structure is very, very strong, but they still want to have a better, better understanding, and FHWA, Federal Highways, who's funding the project, has requested that they have a much better understanding of what they're going to be getting up against when they do take the gunite off. So, they'll spend the summer and next fall doing investigation of the bridge, and during that time, there'll probably be just partial closures of the bridge. And then, they are, they have committed to not closing the bridge in its entire, both lines of the bridge until after January of 2011. So, it's essentially post, that part is postponed a year, but we will see some activity throughout the summer and fall.
They'll likely issue reports as they-
Well, we'll try, we'll ask, we'll, we'll work on that.
For those, okay. If there are no further reports, we are adjourned.